Good afternoon, everyone. There we go, a mic helps. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the August 12th meeting of the Lincoln City Council. I want to say a special welcome to Troop 36 for attending. We hope it'll be a very exciting meeting for you all. In the meantime, I ask that we all please rise and do the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Again, welcome, everyone. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the city council business is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. And this just so happens to be one of those Mondays where we have open mic, but I will ask the clerk to please call the first item of business.
First off, we ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on our sign-in sheet lying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet on each one of those microphones. We ask those individuals from city staff also who are testifying to please state your name, title, and department that you work for. And once you've testified and council does not have any other further questions, you may return to your seat. First, also, as a note and a reminder that due to the Labor Day holiday, the city council will not meet on Monday, September 2nd. And our first item on our consent agenda is Item 1A, appointing Greer McCurley to the Police and Fire Pension Plan Advisory Board for a term to expire September 1st of 2023.
Good afternoon, council. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources, would like to introduce to you Mr. Greer McCurley, who is the Director of Capital Management Accounts at NellNet. He has been nominated to serve on the Police and Fire Investment Pension Advisory Board. The advisory board by council, or excuse me, by municipal code, has already vetted and approved him. He's now before you for your confirmation as well.
Wonderful. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Could you tell us a little bit more about your background? It sounds like you have a well-rounded financial background, but how long have you been a resident of Lincoln? Go ahead and step up to the mic.
Hey, Bert. I moved to Lincoln in 2006. My wife and I moved here from New York. I was at J.P. Morgan for five years, structuring debt transactions and trading derivatives. And I've been at NellNet now for, I guess, 14 years. I do all of the financing of our loan portfolio, and then I also manage an $800 million fixed income portfolio.
So I guess being on the pension committee is kind of ho-hum, right?
Yeah, no, it's exciting. I'm looking forward to doing it, absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for bringing your knowledge and expertise to this wonderful committee.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Any other questions? Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, let's please go on to the rest of the consent items.
Item 1B is appointing Dennis Buckley to the Aging Partners Area-Wide Advisory Council for a term to expire June 30th of 2022.
Good morning, members of council. Dennis Buckley would have liked to have been here this morning, and I apologize, he's not. Dennis, as many of you know, is former editor of the Neighborhood Extra for Lincoln Journal Star. I got to know Dennis when he was on the Red Cross Board that hired me in 1997. He's also active in other service clubs in the community, and most recently finished his last term with the Seniors Foundation, so he'll be a great addition to the area-wide council that Aging Partners has. I'd like to comment on the next one if I could.
Absolutely.
That'd be John Wyville, and John is filling, he's just completed his first term on the area-wide council. He would like to renew his term. He is the Executive Director for the Nebraska Commission on the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. He's a very active member and has worked with us on some special programming that fits his particular market. Thank you for consideration.
Well, that sounds wonderful. Does anyone have any questions? Randy?
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, let's please move on.
We'll move on to Item 1D, reappointing Becky Hanna to the Lincoln Housing Authority Board for a term to expire July 1st of 2024.
Is there anyone that wants to testify on this item? Is Becky here? No, by any chance? Okay, well, let's continue on to the rest of the items.
Item 1E is approving a contract between the city and Nebraska Alumni Association to provide a facility for the Civil Rights Conference for a four-year term for the sum of $2,500 per year or a total not to exceed $10,000 pursuant to bid number 19-173.
Is there anyone that wishes to testify on this item? Sunny, maybe we could just lump them all together and say, is there anyone that wants to provide testimony on any of the items listed under the consent? If you could review with us, are they 1A through 1O?
Yes, we have items on consent agenda from 1A through 1O.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on any of these items on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I think we can vote.
Items 1A, appointing Greer McCurley to the Police and Fire Pension Plan.
Point of order, we vote on all these together. End of petitions and communications.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Items 1A through 1O, or, excuse me, items 1A through 1E, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Introduced by McGinnis, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Items 1F, introduced by Shob?
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Shob, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Items 1G is introduced by Shob?
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Shob, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Now we move on to our petitions and communications. Items 2A is setting the hearing date of Monday, August 26, 2019, at 5:30 for the application of Fast Taco LLC, doing business as Tipsy Tina Taco Cantina, for their Class C K liquor license located at 800 Q Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Shob, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 2B is setting the hearing date for August 26, 2019, 5:30 on the application of Catering Investments LLC, doing business as Yes Chef, for their Class C K liquor license located at 235 South 11th Street, Suite 101, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Shob, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 2C is setting the hearing date for Monday, August 26, 2019, at 5:30 for the application of nonprofit Hub Foundation for the Foundry Community to add an outdoor area measuring approximately 48 feet by 6 feet at 215 North 14th Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Shob, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. There's no miscellaneous referrals, and that's the end of our consent items on our consent agenda. We can move on to our public hearing liquor resolutions, calling items 4A and 4B together. It's the application of Southeast Community College, doing business as Course Restaurant, for a Class I liquor license, and the related manager application of Robert S. Epps, located at 8800 O Street.
Good afternoon. Robert Epps?
Oh, sorry.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes.
Good afternoon, welcome. Tell us a little bit about your application and what's going on at the Southeast Community College.
So the culinary program at Southeast Community College has been growing. We added a student-run restaurant about a year and a half ago, and with that, we really would like to see better education, better training for our graduates, and going out into the industry with procurement of alcohol, service of alcohol, just having a better experience so when they go out to the industry, they're more prepared. So we're looking to do the liquor license, no service during lunches, would only be at special events in the evening, minimum pours, four ounces or less of beer or wine, building curriculum maybe for some bartending and working with the industry on certificate programs and things, just to help with the industry as a large as well.
Terrific, well, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to testify on this item? Well, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
And next item.
We have Item 4C, the application of Herdat LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 356 feet by 230 feet at the rail yard at 350 Canopy Street on August 31st, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Wonderful, welcome. Tell us a little bit about this event that you have coming up. Oh, I don't think you need to be sworn in. Special designated license.
Excellent. Good afternoon, my name is Katie Martin. I represent Herdat, which is a media, marketing, and entertainment business, and we are recently the new managing partners of the Lincoln Rail Yard. We are very excited for this new adventure, and what you have in front of you today is an S D L for August 31st, which is the first home Husker football game. The event itself will run from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. What we are planning to do for the rail yard in the upcoming years are really making this the entertainment district that we hope that Lincoln should see for all age groups, including families, community involvement, and of course, with that said, there's always Husker sports. I have brought today colleagues from Herdat. McKinsey Mitten has joined me, as well as Lauren Marsh from Longwells. Lauren is right behind me. We're very lucky, we have met with all the tenants of the rail yard. They too are very excited to see this pick up for the community. They also support the S D L, and we're very excited to be here today and answer any further questions.
Benny, it looks like you have one.
Yes, she actually answered it. I'm excited to hear that all the tenants have been spoken to, and everybody's on board. That's usually a place where we have a little bit of a friction there. That's exciting to hear. Thank you.
Absolutely, I think that's very important. I personally am a Lincoln kid. I went to Wesleyan, and I went to East, and the Lincoln community, I think that's what strives, is really having that community involvement and open communication. If we can have transparency, I think we'll be in really good shape.
Wonderful, I know that, right?
Well, this was done once last year.
Yes, sir.
And could you review for the council what that turned out to be, if you were aware of that?
I was actually not present for that. We were not the managing partner. If it's okay with you, I'd like to have Lauren come and discuss that process a little further about that day.
Certainly.
Perfect.
Great. Hello. So we were approved for the Purdue game last year. It was supposed to be our trial run. Mother Nature was not in our favor. It rained, it was cold, it was one of our smallest turnouts for the football season, so it wasn't a really good test case, which is why we were trying to do the first game this year, because we're thinking that we'll have nice weather, people will be out there, it'll be a good environment.
Can you tell us a little bit about your security plan for the upcoming event in August?
We have chosen to stay with Fry Frazee, who has been the security firm who has managed the rail yard. The tenants, along with W.R.K., have all spoken very highly of them, and we've also met with them. We will plan to have 12 active security for that, and then I also spoke with J.J. last Friday with Chief Blimeister's office to make sure that all of those pieces are in place. I believe eight officers is what J.J. has planned. We have not confirmed that at this time.
Terrific, and, yes, Richard, did you have a question?
I have a quick question. First game starts at 11:00 a.m., and this permit doesn't start till 11?
You are correct. We actually hope that that will help with somewhat of a, as Lauren just mentioned, we went through the beta project last year, but you really didn't see the full beta project. So we hope that by having that be at 11:00 a.m., that it shows more of a trickle flow in comparison to having Canopy Street and the rail yard open for hours before, hours after. We hope that that-
Rail Yard or the other businesses will be open, correct?
Yes.
But this area won't be, or?
The businesses will be open about 18 hours that day. We were going to start the S D L about three hours after we opened, and then end it five hours before we close, just so we're open for the 10 hours that we expect to be the peak of our day.
Okay, any questions?
Okay, and Chief Blimeister, do you have some thoughts?
Good afternoon, Jeff Blimeister with the Lincoln Police Department, and we did last year, we experimented with this in a game in September, and in fact, Councilman Christensen, Councilman Shob, and former Councilman Carl Estridge participated in a walk-along. We had a great time. It's a joke.
This is very sobering experience, right?
Not how I remember it, but-
But as mentioned, it was a cold and somewhat gloomy day, but here are the concerns, and I believe that Tanya Peters has provided you a document that I believe provides a lot of context to this particular issue. And so some of the concerns that I will relay are this. One, it is the first game, and every year, we are, even though we've done this traffic direction and control and all of these different security services for decades, it's always an experimentation in knowing exactly how things have changed on the streets and how traffic flow patterns and pedestrian flow patterns will be. We historically rely on voluntary sign-ups, so what J.J. Mayer and she has been in conversation with the leadership from Herdat, which, thank you for that, we need the officers to be able to sign up on a voluntary basis in order to provide adequate security. And historically, we have not had that particular issue, but once again, how we open this up is a prioritization. Our first priority is to traffic, direction, and control. Our second, based upon issues in the past, is the north bottoms detail. And last is to add security to the rail yard. I'm confident that we'll be able to provide those particular services, but we won't know until those postings are completed. And similar to last year, we will be comparing the baseline data of calls for service, citations, issues that we may have, successes that we may have, and comparing them, and then talking internally, and I'm sure that that will be shared at the I L C through Officer Hofer and Tanya Peters. And with that, is there any questions that I can attempt to answer for you?
I have one. I think it's interesting, the hours that they have chosen from 11:00 a.m. It seems to me, on the walks that I've done, probably tailgating starts quite early in the north bottom, so they would be most likely starting at 8:00 a.m. on, before an 11:00 a.m. game. Is that, has that been your experience historically when you, you've had an 11:00 a.m. game time?
I would anticipate that before first light, the tailgating will start.
I was trying to-
Both in the north bottoms and throughout the city, and so I do appreciate the thought process that has gone into beginning this at 11 o'clock, and also the fact that they're ending at five hours before close, that way to ensure that they aren't, there isn't a mad push to remove people from Canopy Street in order to ensure compliance with the S D L, so.
When do you know in terms of staffing, if you have enough volunteers, and then what are your expectations of them, should you fail to have enough officers volunteer?
It's our preference, but again, this is on a prioritization and voluntary basis, even though if you keep in mind that at the beginning of the year, we restrict our officers' abilities to take the day off on game day. So in order for that to occur, they have to use a block of 36 hours or more of vacation in order to take the single day of game day off if they're scheduled to work. And once again, just as kind of an educational component, our staffing is not static. We staff to day of week and time of day, so there's not the same number of officers on. We're really looking to be able to provide the best services based upon historic and trend line call volumes. All of that, I can't tell you exactly, Chair, when we'll have those filled, but if we begin to suspect that we won't be able to do that, we'll certainly be in communications, and I also want to provide both you and all of you our assurances that J.J. and others do their best to encourage officers to take advantage of these voluntary postings.
Okay. Is it fair to ask the applicant, what will you do if you don't have the duty officers?
I would actually ask Chief Blimeister his thoughts on that, sincerely as a protection of the community. If it's not safe and we don't do our job first at this first football game, if I were to come back up to you for the next football game, I think I would probably just sit in my chair, actually. I don't know that I would come. So, safety first in the community for us, absolutely. That, I think that is a non-negotiable for us. Again, with the success of the rail yard, we hope to be successful, safe, and a family environment, as much as we can make that for home games, so.
And that's a valid question, Councilwoman, and we will, once again, we're going to do everything that we can to, in order to adequately staff this, and if it does not, then we'll have discussions first, and if we need intercession on the part of this body, then we'll definitely bring that forward, but I don't anticipate that in occurring, so.
Thank you.
Push the button. Let's talk just a moment about the space, the territory. What is actually being closed off, and what area we're talking about testing this tailgate in? Would you like to address that for a moment?
Sure, so the space is on Canopy Street, directly west, oh, thank you. Directly west of the rail yard, in between the outside area, and then it would face Hero, so from Canopy, north and south on either side of the rail yard.
Okay, the map is up now, so if you, yeah.
So you have Hilton, Hilton Garden Inn, Hero, and Mellow Mushroom. See the barricades on the north, and then barricades to the south, which are just on the other side of Burger 5. You have the open rail yard space where people can currently have open liquor, and then the S D L would come right onto Canopy Street. Did I just read that?
Yeah. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for staff? No? Okay, all right, well, thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. As I remember, last year, the rail yard managers of the businesses agreed that if, that they'd hire private security. Did that come to pass?
I believe that they are hiring private security in addition to having law enforcement available.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Let's move on to the next one.
Calling Item 4D, application of Lincoln Pub Group, Inc. for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 65 feet by 40 feet at 728 Q Street for August 31st, September 14th, September 28th, and October 5th, 2019, from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Hello, my name's Todd Campfield. I'm the manager of the End Zone Bar and Grill, which is the business that Lincoln Pub Group operates. We're just a sports bar down the Haymarket at 7th and Q Street, and we are just licensing to, we rent out the parking lot behind the building from our landlord. In the past, we've used a full parking lot, set up a bar, gone the works. Just due to supply and demand and other factors, we're just going to do it half the size this year. We're just going to fence off two spots, just kind of have it as an overflow place, people to go outside and smoke mostly. We might have a speaker setup. We will have it fenced off, we'll have the two exits and entrances. There'll be security monitoring entrances and exits, checking IDs, making sure liquor's not going beyond the boundaries, and then there'll probably be a tent for shade, and it's just mostly just a little overflow area for people that want to be outside. We'll have food served inside if they want to take their food outside, we'll have the table set up for them as well.
Terrific. Are there any questions? Seeing none, well, thank you so much.
Excellent, thank you for your time.
Yeah. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay, let's go on to the next.
Calling Item 4E, application of Nebraska Hop Growers Association-
Calling item 4E, application of Nebraska Hop Growers Association for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 200 feet by 170 feet at Gateway Mall located at 6100 O Street on Saturday, September 7th, and Sunday, September 8th, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Saturday, and 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Sunday.
Welcome.
Jake Robson with Nebraska Hop Growers Association, spelling is R-O-B-I-S-O-N, Jacob. We are the nonprofit in the state of Nebraska, primarily education and promotion of use of hops. Our biggest consumer of hops in the state is craft beer. So we've partnered with Annie and Fidel, if you want to introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Annie Mattos of Perfect Pour Studios.
And I'm Fidel Mattos of Perfect Pour Studios.
And the primary application is developed, this will be our first application, first trial of a Capital City Oktoberfest, promoting primarily Nebraska craft beers, and more of a German Fest, Oktoberfest-type environment.
Terrific, that sounds like a lot of fun. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm sorry, I see Gateway Mall on your application, I'm just having trouble envisioning where it gave me. Can you help me with that?
No, we'll put up a map here. And this was a, from original applications, this was a change in venue. There was a, originally there was a Turbin Flats location, and now this is Sears, this is all open parking, and right in there would be the 200 by 170 blocked off. We're doing a variance for a single fence, chain link, six-foot-high fencing. So general, overall plan, Matt? And we've been working with the state fire control, state fire marshal, obviously the city clerk, Teresa, making sure we have all of our, all of our proper documentation, applications, everything in place.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And was there any concern expressed about your request for the variance of just a single fence?
Not at this time.
Not at this time.
We haven't, haven't been denied nor approved yet for the single fence.
Are there any questions? Well, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, let's go on to the next.
Calling item 4F, application of Bourbon Entertainment LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 556 feet by 525 feet in N Street between Centennial Mall and 16th Street on Friday, September 13, 2019, from 5:00 PM to 11:59 PM.
Welcome, tell us about this event.
Good afternoon, I'm Sean Reagan on behalf of the Bourbon. It's not a football-related event, we're just doing another outdoor concert, or trying to, as long as the weather cooperates. This would be our, our sixth or seventh time at it, but probably only our second actual concert outdoors, due to the weather. This is just a country concert. We anticipate, I like to shoot low, last time I was here, I said 2,500, and we got 3,000, so I'll say 2,500 again. But I do anticipate probably about 2,500 to 3,000 folks. And again, it's not football-related or anything, it's on a Friday night, and again, if the weather cooperates, it'd be our third successful outdoor show.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I'm going to ask about the logistics again. So this is where you're going to block off part of N Street and put the stage there?
Right, this is the old, basically the old Rib Fest footprint. I've got a map here somewhere. Stole this from a fat handsome fellow back there at SMG. So it's the area right in front of Pershing. The stage is over here towards N Street, and then the, there's food trucks and a bar area right along here, right along in. Porta-potties are set up throughout here, gate entrances here, and then there's usually one and two beer carts set up. But that's, on a, on a 3,000-cap show, again with the stage here, the crowd usually goes back to right about here. The best we've done outside, we had, I think, Tom could correct me on this, I think we had 5,500 or so for 311, and that place is so big, the crowd came back to about here. But we'd have all that other area, like we said, for food trucks and a bar set up. And then there's a seating area as well.
Thank you.
So do you have just one music act to build, or several?
Well, we have two. Aaron Watson is the headliner, country act, and then Logan Myes is support. There'll probably be a local support, which I assume would start probably around 7:00, Logan Myes at 8:00, and the headliner about 9:15 or so. These things are done by 11:00, and we have usually cleaned up and cleared out by 11:15, 11:30.
Terrific, well, thank you very much.
Certainly, thank you.
Any questions? Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, let's go on.
Calling item 4G, application of SMG Food and Beverage LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 214 feet by 225 feet in R Street from the alley to the east of Red One Parking Garage to Canopy Street on Friday, August 30th, 2019, from 4:00 PM to 11:30 PM.
Good afternoon, my name is Tom Lorenz, I'm general manager with Pinnacle Bank Arena. We are putting an application in to do a event on a Friday night prior to the first football game. We're working with IMG and Spree Tail. Spree Tail is about to announce some major issue, or some major exciting news, that they'll do some fundraising, that has something to do with Husker football, and points, and things like that. This will work with them to create an area outside in our plaza. There'll be a stage with the disc jockey, we'll have some food trucks, we'll be able to take our liquor license and extend it out into the plaza and also onto the street. It'll be done by about 11 o'clock that evening. It'll be fenced in with six-foot-high chain link fencing, and this is something that we've done a couple times before, it's very easy and nice to do. It does not take up the intersection, so that the turn onto Canopy Street is still wide open, and we will have off-duty officers that will be on site also.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much, is there...
The fundraising is for, I meant to say, it's for the Nebraska Food Banks, so, worthy cause.
Richard?
You said you will be setting up at 9:00 AM, is that roughly?
Yeah, we'll take the street at that point and block it off, and begin the setup throughout the day. We'll be able to put out our fencing tables, chairs, and be able to also then start to get the food trucks in in the afternoon.
Okay. And our city doesn't have any problem with closing out streets prior to game day, or...
For instance, on a concert day, our standard procedure would be to close that morning and leave it closed. That's where merchandise and some of the other material starts to load in for a day, so it works out well, and there still is, again, traffic that can come down our street, turn at Canopy, and get around.
Okay.
And also, part of the application is for a street closure.
And it'll end at 11:00, it says?
Yeah, it shouldn't end at 11:00 at night.
Because you're going to have a DJ right across from all those apartments.
But that's also right next to rail yard, so that's a, that's a normal type of a thing. When the apartment, my understanding is when the apartment leases were put out, that people understood that there would be activities not only at the rail yard, but also at Pinnacle Bank Arena.
Earplugs.
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 Kids that are in there like the music. Join the party.
Well, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Okay, thank you, let's go on.
Calling item 4H, application of Pete Ricketts for Governor, Inc. for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 287 feet by 287 feet at 1425 H Street on August 31st, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, September 14th, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and on September 28th, October 5th, October 26th, and November 29th, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Hi there, my name is Corben Waldron, it's C-O-R-B-E-N-W-A-L-D-R-O-N, and this application is for, we host tailgates for football games at the governor's residence. We'll do them for six of the seven games this year. They run from three hours before to an hour before kickoff, so you'll note, some of the games later in the year, we have eight to eight, that's just because the time's not set yet, we won't be going all day. It is a, you know, a private, closed event. We apply for the SDL in order to accept donations from wholesalers, so there's no cash, everything's free to attend, and we provide hot dogs, hamburgers, basic, tailgate foods. I think a lot of you have been there before, so you kind of know it, but if you have any other questions, I can answer them.
I don't think there are any questions, but thank you for coming down. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, I think we can vote on these.
I make it, I move approval of items 4A through H.
Second. Moved approval by Christensen, seconded by Washington, is there any discussion?
It's football season.
It's football season. How could we tell? Let's vote.
I'm first, right?
Schoep?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you all, good luck.
Big red. Go big red.
Keep pointing.
Okay.
Moving to public hearing resolutions, calling item 5A, approving an amendment to the agreement previously approved by Resolution A89188 with RSM US LLP, formerly McGladdery LLC, to extend the term of the contract for auditing services for Lincoln Water and Lincoln Wastewater Funds pursuant to bid 15-12, fiscal years ending August 31st, 2019, 2020, 21, and 22, for the sum not to exceed 205,000.
Good afternoon, Council, Finance Director Brandon Kaufman. I'm actually going to speak about 5A, 5B, because they are somewhat related, given they're both audit contracts. So, the audit, the purpose of it is to provide users with financial statements, that they can make reasonable assurance, that they can rely on those statements to make informed decisions. Financial statements are the primary vehicle for management to, given it, give the official accounting of the city. Management is responsible for the presentation of those financial statements to the audit, who are independent auditors. And then the governing body's role is really to ensure that management is fulfilling its obligation to make sure we have internal controls in, in setup, and then also that we're financially reporting the accurate numbers. Article 4, Section 8 of the Charter also requires an annual independent audit, that's delivered to the council on an annual basis. In 2015, the city conducted a competitive request for a proposal process to attain auditors for the city. And I think, believe Councilmember Christensen was a part of that process, and out of that came recommendations for two auditors. One was for RSM, which is 5A, to do, to audit the water and wastewater funds, and then the second was with BKD, and that was to do all other city funds. So, in addition to the other funds, all, all the city funds, BKD also does independent, or more specific audits for enterprises, so EMS, solid waste, landfill, community health endowment, and the West Haymarket Joint Public Agency. Included in that original contract was an option to extend another four years. All multi-year contracts have to come before city council, so I'm recommending that, for the extension of RSM, and also BKD for another four years. We also look at, you know, best practices, so Government Finance Officers Association puts out best practices. They recommend a minimum of five-year contract, minimum five-year contract with a auditing firm. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Or these items, I think we're calling both 5A and 5B together?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. We are opposed to having extended audits like this. You are like $500 million in the red if you count the arena, and this is not in the taxpayer's interest, and it is not what we would expect of a city council, to look into covering costs at a lower level. You don't know what your income will be in the years ahead that this covers, that you've signed a contract with. So we are totally against that. I don't know too much about the company that does the wastewater, but Watch Dogs has monitored the JPA almost since the beginning that it was formed. We have asked for an outside audit from not somebody that the city or the JPA has hired, but a totally unconnected audit company to go over the books. We are not, we don't feel comfortable about the way the taxpayers' money is being spent, and we might find the same thing if we go to look at this other company with the wastewater. So I think it would be wise for the public's comfort to make this a yearly situation, and then go back and look at what your budget is at that point. I understand that you're going to have to take out of the general fund in order to cover a shortfall that you have in your city budget. The, never hurts to have other eyes look at finances. Remember Enron and their, I believe their audit company was Price Waterhouse, I'm not sure if that's correct or not, if I'm offending them, but I know it was a problem. And that wasn't a taxpayer situation, but it was affected many people in the private area. So we would like to see that you reconsider this at a yearly level, so that you have a better handle on what's going on. The, one never knows what the future will hold, and budget projections are that, just that. So we would encourage you to look at both of these companies, go back to the drawing board, and lower the expectations, so that the public might be better served financially. With that debt that has been, you have at this point, and the fact that there's a budget shortfall in spite of the fact that you have a windfall from property taxes, it doesn't look like long-term commitments should be made at this time. I understand that within the city charter, in professional services, you can write the book. I don't, we don't like that at all, but since it is in the charter, that's the way it would, it has to be. However, some of the JPA obligations are not necessarily professional, and it's come... and it's come to pass that they are calling everything a professional contract. And so a definition of what a professional contract is. CPAs probably would be considered professionals. I'm not sure that companies that provide oak floors for the arena would be considered professionals. So we ask that you-
One more minute?
I know. So we ask that you cut this back to one year and look at it again.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsey. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on either five A or five B? Oh, worry, I'm sorry.
Staff question.
Staff questions, please.
So let us know about, what are the implications if we, if we don't do these audits?
Well, it's a requirement to do the annual audit, so, I mean, and we have also requirements through our bond documents that, through our covenants there, that require us to do an annual audit for our investors that are buying our bonds.
What are the advantages of having multi-year contracts?
Having multi-year contracts, anything with the auditor, auditor really allows that consistency. I mean, that's why D F O A recommends a minimum of five-year contracts. You don't want to rotate auditors on an annual basis because the learning curve for even auditors to come in when they're presented with all this new financial systems, financial information, it's a steep learning curve. So having that consistency with multi-year contracts is really beneficial.
Thank you.
I have a question as a follow-up. If we were to go to one-year contracts for audits, how long would that extend the contracting period? And would that have any effect on the price of the audit?
I can't answer about the impact of the price. That'd probably have to go back and have a discussion. You know, we do have agreements in place with different types of entities that have one-year contracts in place. I'd feel more comfortable, I guess, if the governing body approved this, given the fact that it went out for a request for a proposal. You know, the original timeframe was four years. This is the option to extend for another four. In four years, we're going to go back out and do another R F P again.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Will the clerk please just read five B? I think we've had, we'll ask for additional testimony. Okay.
Item five B is approving an amendment to the engagement agreement with B K D LLP to provide auditing services for all City of Lincoln funds except Lincoln Electric System, Lincoln Water System, and Lincoln Wastewater System pursuant to bid fifteen dash one two, to add auditing services for the West Hay Market Joint Public Agency, and to extend the term of original contract for fiscal years ending August thirty first, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two, for a sum not to exceed six hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Did anyone like to address this item only? Okay, let's go on to the next.
Item five C is accepting a report of new impending claims against the city for July sixteenth through thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on one of the claims that have been denied or pending?
We do have a motion to amend on this item.
I was going to-
That'll do during the voting session.
Yeah.
We'll come back to that, okay? Is there anyone else? No one? Okay, let's go on to item- On the report of new impending claims against the city for July sixteenth through the thirty-first. Okay, certainly.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs. I looked at the list, and a lot of it is L E S, doing something wrong, causing a problem with a public. And they have their own board, but you also have a interest in that. And so I would, we would like to suggest, recommend that you keep track of L E S and what it's doing with the public. And maybe you can get a report from the board at L E S to find out how they can lower the number of claims. I don't know if this is an aberration, but most of the claims had to do with L E S.
Thank you very much for your observation on that one. Is there anyone else that would like to address the new impending claims? Okay, let's move on now to five D and five E.
Calling items five D and five E, appeal by Ann Post on behalf of Vic and Kathleen Hannan of Planning Commission's denial of special permit one nine zero two five to develop a community unit plan to include one residential lot with waivers of drainage study, grading plan, sidewalks, and post-construction stormwater management plan on property generally located at sixty-sixth Street and Pine Lake Road. And item five E is appealed the denial of request for deviation for Hannan Place condominium unit number two, located at the same location at sixty-sixth and Pine Lake Road.
Ms. Post, did you want to come forward? I believe you want to request a delay.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Post. I, let's see, I'm here on behalf of Vic and Kathleen Hannan, who own the property. Today, I'm in front of you asking a three-month delay. I know two weeks ago, we requested a delay to have more time to contact the church and the neighboring property. I can tell you that we spent a lot of time and effort, and we have made contact with the church. We believe we have a, just a, the matter in front of the right parties, but we've been told that their decision-making process optimistically can take several months. So we're asking for a delay to, in the spirit of what we requested, a delay to ensure that full communication happens. We give them time to do that, and we can retake this up again in three months and hopefully have a, more information for you at that point.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. So you say, they say it could take several months?
Yes.
So it might be more than three?
It's possible.
Would you be willing to make this a delay, put it on pending, no date certain? And then you bring it forward when you're ready?
If that's what the council would prefer, sure, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think we can accept a motion to that effect.
I move that this items four, five D and E be put on pending, no date certain.
Second. Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Ward. Any discussion?
Just one question, Madam Chair. So is the church in that negotiation, Ann, is that really the only obstacle that you see that could really foreseeably be worked out at a date uncertain? Is there not a lot more to this issue than the relationship with the church?
I know that when this came in front of the council, I spoke with many council members, and they expressed a concern that we had not talked to the church sufficiently. And so that is why we requested a delay, and that is why at this point we are continuing to request the delay, to continue that communication. So I, I think that at this point, the delay is to work out that issue and determine if that can get us to where we need to be, or if we, again, need to focus on a few of the other issues outstanding on this matter.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the motion that's before us to put it on pending, no date certain? Okay, let's, let's go ahead and vote on that. Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Thank you, Ann. And then I think we can now enter the full voting session on the resolutions.
A man.
Right.
We'll get there, yeah.
We will eventually get to that item that we can amend.
Item five A was the, approving the amendment to the agreement previously approved by resolution eight eight nine one eight eight with RSM US LLP, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by McGinnis, seconded by Christensen. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll. Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Item five B is approving the amendment to the engagement agreement with B K D LLP to provide auditing services for all City Lincoln funds except Lincoln Electric System, Water System, and Wastewater System pursuant to bid fifteen dash one two two. Introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by McGinnis, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
No, wait.
Oh, yes.
Is this the one with the motion to amend on it?
Nope, it's the next one.
Sorry.
Okay, let's, let's vote on this one. Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Items five C is accepting a report of new pending claims against the city for July sixteenth through the thirty-first. Introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
And I would like to offer an amendment that we strike line nine as the claim for, from ALO is withdrawn at twenty-eight eighty.
Second.
Okay, a motion to amend, introduced by Washington, seconded by Christensen to remove the claim from ALO communication. It's been withdrawn. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. And now on the main motion. Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Okay, let's move on to ordinance's second reading and related resolutions.
Items six A is approving the closeout of completed construction projects and transfer of unspent appropriations and cash, if any, from various projects to projects where additional funding is needed within the Lincoln Transportation and Utilities Department, Parks and Recreation Department, the Police Department, and Urban Development Department.
Brandon Kaufman, Finance Director for the city. So this is a, basically a year-end cleanup item that comes before the council on an annual basis. Article nine, section twenty-seven of the charter requires that the city council for, to move any appropriations between capital projects, you have to do so by ordinance. So you have an ordinance here before you to allow cleanup of those various types of projects. Representatives are here from Lincoln Transportation Utilities, Parks and Rec, Police, and Urban Development to answer any specific questions that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions?
It's an easy one.
It's an easy one? Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you all for being willing to testify. Let's go on to the next item.
Calling item six B and six C together. Six B is change of zone one nine zero one nine, application of Stewart Development Partnership for a change from R four residential district to O three Office Park District and property generally located at six four three North Forty-Fifth Street, along with the use permit of one nine zero zero seven, application of Stow Real Estate Holdings LLC on behalf of Stewart Development Partnership to allow for twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial use with waivers of setbacks on the same property located at six four three North Forty-Fifth Street.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from items six B and six C.
Okay, thank you. Potential appearance of a conflict of interest?
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Calkowski appearing today on behalf of the property owner, Stewart Development Partnership. They own a little over two acres at the southwest corner of North Forty-Fifth Street and Vine Street. Both of those roadways are classified as minor arterials, so there are some limitations to access to the site. The owner is requesting a change of zone from R four to O three on this site, and the prospective purchaser of the site, who's represented by Tom Houston, is, is requesting a use permit. So I'm going to hit the change of zone, and Tom's going to go over the use permit or any questions you might have. So the map I have in front of you kind of shows the adjacent uses around this site. If you look to the east, we have existing B one commercial. To the south, we have both P and O three zoning, but basically office uses along that west side of South Forty-Fifth Street, excuse me, North Forty-Fifth Street. And then future apartments are proposed to the west. So a change of zone to O three in this location really just is a continuation of the office use on the west side of the street there, and provides really a nice transition between the commercial on the east and then the apartments that are proposed to the west. This item was in front of Planning Commission, received five to zero support. And I think, I don't think there were a lot of really issues related to the change of zone. But I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any on the change of zone, or if you'd like Tom to go over the use permit, then I'd be available for questions then, too.
I guess this is not a question about the change of zone, but it's, relates to what's on the property right now, adjacent to, will that tower, the large tower remain?
I think the tower is staying.
Welcome.
Sure, answer is yes.
Yes, okay. So everybody knows about the tower.
Parcel a little bit.
Mm-hmm, okay.
He's coming.
First I zoomed it too much. Madam Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is two three three South Thirteenth Street, Suite nineteen hundred, here in Lincoln, appearing before you today on behalf of Stowe Real Estate Holdings, which is a Cincinnati developer of plasma centers around the country. Tim Gergen, project engineer, is also here if you have any specific engineering questions or site questions that I cannot handle. Premised upon the support for the change of zone to the O three Office Park District, my client had filed the use permit application seeking to approve this office use on this parcel up to twenty-five thousand square feet. Lot one, which is the northern partial that really is closest to Vine Street, would be permitted at a size not to exceed fifteen thousand square feet. Lot two would be permitted at a size not to exceed ten thousand square feet. For lot one, there is a building plan, and it's approximately eleven thousand one hundred square foot office building, medical office building for a plasma center. In lot two, there's not a user identified for that site yet. It is, that site will be marketed and sold to an office user not to exceed ten thousand square feet. The, one thing I would just note, of the conditions of approval, there was a condition two point five that it, that would have required a driveway off of Forty-Fifth Street. The Lincoln Transportation Utility Department did approve a request for deviation, leaving the property from that driveway requirement because at this location, Forty-Fifth Street really is characterized as a minor arterial that carries maybe twenty percent of the traffic, and so I think it's, it's going to be, receive a little different treatment. So that, that was approved by L T U on July twenty-fourth. At the Planning Commission, there was a little question about the parking capacity of the site, and I just want to address that briefly. The parking matrix of the Lincoln zoning ordinance would require one stall per three hundred square feet for this O three Office Park District. Lot one at fifteen thousand square feet permitted would require fifty stalls. The site plan reflects seventy-eight parking stalls, which is a hundred and fifty-six percent of the requirement. The actual building is approximately eleven thousand one hundred square feet and would need thirty-seven parking stalls. And at seventy-eight stalls, there's over two hundred percent of the required parking for lot one. Lot two at ten thousand square feet, building size as a maximum, again, would require thirty-four stalls, and those stalls are reflected on the site plan. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any question. I think this is a good use for this infill project, and the plasma center is sorely needed in North Lincoln.
Yes, Senator.
Why would your client build a bigger parking lot than is necessary?
We see that frequently, that the parking requirements, the municipal ordinance underestimate what the developers think they need. And my client is, has good experience on the turnover and the volumes that would be coming to a plasma center based upon their scheduling, and that's why the parking lot's sized as it is.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Tom, could you talk about the tower for the benefit, maybe, of the newer members, but me, for example?
I may have to defer to Tim. I don't know a lot about the tower, other than it exists and will continue to exist, and there's a lot of easements that are in place that really, really restrict some of the site planning, but I'll let Tim address that.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Tim Gergen, engineer with the Clark Anderson Partners. I worked with the Wayuka Cemetery about five years ago on the larger tower relocation. So if you remember back, we used to have a tower here, and the guy wires took up all the properties. Mr. Raybold should know, being right neighbor there.
My office is right there, so I see it every day.
So Alpha Media, which owns K F R and those communication stations, took down the tower and made it a much smaller tower, and that's what you see here at this location. And so it's a much smaller tower, which requires much less of a guy wire, and that's what became the Stewart property developable, as well as the Wayuka property here, which show those future apartments.
Very good, thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Benny, do you have a question? No?
Out of these two testifiers. I would like to have a staff question from Mr. Carey, though, if we, at the appropriate time.
Okay, well, I guess.
Is it now?
Is there anyone else that wants to testify on this item? Let's bring up staff. Mr. Carey.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department.
Mr. Carey, thank you. I noticed that the Planning Commission voted in favor of this project. Do you have any other concerns or any other issues you'd like to bring forward and tell us what's going on here?
No, I don't think there's any other concerns. I think the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this based on the merits of the proposal. The change of zone is very straightforward. It makes sense to have office zoning in this area. It does provide a buffer from the retail activity on the other side of Forty Fifth Street. We have office directly to the south of the site, and then it does create the buffer to the future apartments residential to the west, as well as to the north side of Vine Street. So that part of it is very straightforward. We are supportive of that. And the project itself, it does make sense. I think it's already been touched on that the one topic that was of, did have discussion that the Planning Commission was the parking. We feel comfortable that the applicant, the owner understands what their business is, and so we feel comfortable with the amount of parking that's being provided. So we are good with the recommendation of approval.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's get Richard back here. Okay, we're all back. On to ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. I'm pretty sure we can vote on.
Item seven A is amending the pay schedule for certain employee groups by adjusting the pay range for employees whose classifications are assigned the prefix by the letter B, effective August twenty-second, twenty nineteen, introduced, excuse me, by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Ward, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item seven B is amending the pay schedule for employee groups, adjusting the pay range for employees' classifications, starting with the prefix letter N, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Shob. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven C is amending the pay schedule for employee groups, prefix by the letter A, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Christensen, seconded by?
Me.
Oh, Shob. Okay, Shob. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. I do have a question, if I could ask. Am I able to group these and vote all at once, or would I have to call the vote for all?
That's a great idea, let's group them.
We have to vote individually.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, that was a very good idea.
Clarification, thank you.
Nice try.
Love efficiency.
Just wanted to make sure before I started doing that, so, thank you, we appreciate that.
You can shorten the description, though.
Okay.
Seven D.
Seven D. Amending pay schedules with the pay ranges prefix by the letter C, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Christensen, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven E is amending the pay schedule with the pay ranges that are prefix by the letter M, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Christensen, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven F is amending the pay schedule for pay ranges prefix by the letter F, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Shob. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven G is amending pay schedules with the pay ranges prefix by the letter X, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven H, amending pay schedule for pay ranges prefix by the letter E, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by, introduced by Christensen, seconded by Shob?
Yes.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item seven I, amending the pay schedule for pay ranges prefix by the letter W, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Introduced by Christensen, seconded by Ward. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Could we please make certain that we have addressed six A?
The, just for procedural issues, we don't usually make amendments until the voting session for that item, so that's why we're going to wait until next week.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sometimes you just get advance notice on motions that are being considered.
Okay, that's all that I have for...
Resolutions first reading?
Mm-hmm, resolutions first readings are items eight A through eight C, and we did not have any ordinance's first reading, and there isn't a section in there on our agenda, so we will correct that when we have our action for tomorrow, but no ordinance's first readings at this time.
Okay, and I believe tonight it's an open-mic night. Is there anyone that would like to address the city council?
My name is Jeff Payne, and I live in the Southwest District.
Well, talk to the microphone.
Oh, okay, sorry. Today, I want to share a concern of mine about the high volume of out-of-county vehicles that I observe driving in our city. Some of these are college students, some are day visitors to the city from another county, and many are commuters. While stopped at a traffic light, I observed many vehicles with out-of-county plates. A neighbor on my street has a motorhome and a vehicle parked in their driveway with thirty-four county plates on both vehicles. I believe there are people who live and work in this city, yet are licensing and registering their vehicles in another county to escape our high-city wheel tax and other high motor-vehicle taxes in our county, city, and school district. I work for the University of Nebraska as a student-teacher supervisor. This job takes me to various elementary school buildings in the city. I sometimes have to arrive at the start of the school day for my first appointment. As I am parked, I observe parents dropping off their children for school. I also observe several vehicles with out-of-county plates on them at these locations. So these people are using the Lincoln Public Schools to educate their children, and yet do not pay the local taxes to the school district by licensing their vehicles in another county. In essence, this group of people are literally getting a free ride by doing so. I went to the Lancaster County Treasurer's website, and under the frequently asked questions section, I found the following question. "I just moved from one county to another county. Do I need to get new plates and registration for my vehicle in the new county to which I have moved?" The answer is, when your out-of-county plates are up for renewal, then you must come to the DMV office and bring the out-of-county plates with you and your registration. At that time, you will be given a new registration and Lancaster County license plates for your vehicle. So there is definitely a law requirement on the books that states that you must license and get a new registration for your vehicle in your new county. I then looked on the website to see what the breakdown is for these motor-vehicle taxes and what they fund in this city. One percent is retained by the county treasurer, and one percent is distributed to the Vehicle and Registration System Replacement and Maintenance Cash Fund. The remaining funds are allocated as follows. Sixty percent to the local school system or district. In counties with a city of metropolitan class size, eighteen percent is allocated to the county, twenty-two percent is allocated to the city, and of course, seventy-four dollars for cars and a hundred and forty dollars for trucks goes for the highest in the state Lincoln City Wheel Tax. My point in bringing this to the attention of elected officials in our city and county is the large amount of revenue that is lost to people who continue to license and register their vehicles in another county, other than the one in which they reside, and to go on the public record that there is a requirement that you must register and license your vehicle in the new county you have moved to when the other plates are up for renewal. I would definitely think our mayor would be interested in people following the law as our city is running a shortfall again for its budget, and we have to dip into the cash reserves. If all of these people who continue to operate their vehicles on out-of-county plates actually followed the law, it would be bringing in more revenue to the city that might just help that shortfall in the budget. Twenty-two percent does go to the city besides our enormous wheel tax. I also recall during the recent election that the now-current mayor said she would not consider reducing the city wheel tax. Obviously, that fund is still needed for adding more bike lanes. The previous mayor said at some point that the increase in the wheel tax would be reduced. Of course, unfortunately, that never happened. Maybe if it did ever happen, it would give Lincoln citizens added confidence in our elected officials. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to testify at open mic?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. I saw on television that Lincoln is getting into the scooter business. I don't know if you listen to the national news, but cities are doing away with them because of accidents, because of people leaving them lying around when they're not supposed to be, or stealing them. So it's something to be considered, how you want to manage that if you've already bought them, and if you haven't, to think about not buying them. And if you think that people who ride bicycles around Lincoln are all nice, because this is nice Nebraska, the last, ten days ago, I was out in front of the city-county buildings. People were walking towards me. I was walking in the opposite direction, and a young man on a bicycle went in between us, and I had to hop on the grass in order to avoid a collision. So, you know, there are people who are not going to be respectful of that. It's ridiculous that the police department has to come here for a bar or for a rail yard event.
Point of order?
Yes.
That item was on today's agenda. It's not subject to open mic.
Thank you for clarifying that. Mr. Christensen is correct. You may testify on any item that is not on the previous agenda or a future agenda.
Not even for the police department?
That's correct.
Okay. So you are spending money like it's going out of style. The new mayor has said she's taking money out of the general fund. You have approved a COPS, which takes it off of the budget, but taxpayers are still liable for that repayment.